Testing, yes. I'd like to call the Joint Airport Authority to order and like to stand for a pledge of allegiance, please.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have the roll call, please?
Yes. For Camarillo Airport Authority Supervisor Long has been excused, Supervisor Zaragosa.
Here.
Councilmember Mulche.
Present.
Councilmember Santangelo.
Here.
Public member Thomas.
Here.
Alternate public member Hotson.
Here.
Camarillo has a quorum. For Oxnard Airport Authority Supervisor Long has been excused, Supervisors Zaragosa.
Here.
Mayor Flynn.
Here.
Councilmember Perallo.
Public member Calhoun.
Here.
Alternate public member Fussell. Oxnard has a quorum.
Very good for the Camarillo Authority. Could I have an approval of the minutes of June 13, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We hip, you know.
Okay, for Oxnard, it's a pleasure.
Yes.
You got first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, it's approved.
Okay, item four is public comment. I do not currently have any cards for a public comment. Seeing on, hearing none, let's go to number five, which is new business.
Mr. Chairman, first item is five A, authorizing the Director of Airports or his designee to accept and sign Federal Aviation Administration grant number 3060339037 2019 when offered in an amount of $407,409, which will provide funds from the Camarillo Airport Improvement, specifically Taxway Hotel, which we'll talk about in a second. Authorize the Director of Airports or his designee to apply for, accept, and sign for a matching grant from Caltrans if offered, which we anticipate that it will be, and authorize County Council to execute certificate of sponsors attorney required by Federal Aviation Administration grant agreements. The three recommendations are, one, authorize the Director to accept and sign, as noted just a moment ago, authorize the Director or designee to apply for, accept, and sign a matching grant from Caltrans, and then authorize County Council to execute sponsors attorney certificate. This funded, this is a project that was planned and advanced and is funded through the grant program of the FAA, the Airport Improvement Program, in anticipation of the FAA's deadline for the grant award and the board's meeting schedule, staff asks the departments to be authorized to accept the FAA and Caltrans grant when offered in advance, because we have a very tight timeline when those grants come in that we have to turn around, and with our, with our meeting cycle, it just, it makes it better for us to be able to do this in advance. The grant estimate is based upon the project total project cost and be adjusted to reflect based on bid, construction costs once bids are opened, actually, they've been open now, which we'll talk about in a minute, so this is some language that was used in the commission meeting that we just need to update. The project's been programmed by the FAA as a, as I said a minute ago, from the Airport Improvement Fund, and Caltrans matching grant of actually 4.5% of the federal funds joins us with that. This is for the Taxway Hotel rehabilitation that we've talked about a couple of times since I've been here already, and I can go into the details of that if you'd like, but it's basically to remove the markings that are there, do a reseal on it and a restripe, and guess, it's preventative maintenance is what it is, is what it boils down to. I'm happy to take any questions on this item. The next item is also related to this, it's just a, this is for the grant and the next one's for the plans.
Ms. Houston.
So, the question that I have is the timing of the work and how is it going to impact airport operations?
Yes, sir. Why don't we, well, I hate to do that.
Let's, let's keep the two separate, okay?
Yeah, because that is in the next one. It's, the, the next item is the same project, but it covers the, covers the timing of what we're talking about, so we will address that in just a minute.
That's fine, okay, perfect.
So, Mr. Chair, the, you know, the, were FAA and Caltrans coming out with 94.5% of the cost?
Yes, sir.
Which is good.
Yes, sir, and, and our, our portion is, you'll see here, is $22,408 out of the, out of the total cost.
Right.
Okay, I have no general comment cards, but I do have one from the Airport Advisory Commission. Do you want to make any comment on, on item? It's the five A, or do you want to, do you want to wait till five B, or do you want to cover them both at the same time? Okay, all right.
Chair, I have one, one question about the grant process and agreeing to accept a grant. Does that come with any type of extenuating mandates or anything out of the ordinary or anything that'll constrict or change the way the airport currently operates?
So, the latter part of the question, no. The first part of the question, yes. Every time we accept another grant from the Airport Improvement Program, we accept another 20-year extension of the grant assurances. There's 39 grant assurances that we agree to for a 20-year period upon accepting a new grant each year that we do that. Now, those 39 grant assurances, we've been living comfortably by for however many years the airport's been open, since 1974, three, six.
One of those.
Somebody, up there, Mike.
Actually, I wasn't here either.
But, yeah, it's, it's nothing.
Mr. Calhoun was.
This, this grant would be nothing different from that.
Okay.
So, and, and we, and we're actually bound to those assurances anyway for another 19 years for the grant we took last year.
Right. That's, if you look at the things that happen in Santa Monica and their, and their desire to tear up the runway at Santa Monica, those are all tied into past grants and, and the politics involved in that.
Exactly, that's right. We gotta, go ahead. You got your mic?
The basic formulation, I believe, is about 1971. And finally.
There you go.
What trouble does it worth, yes, sir?
We got a senior person. In time, not in age.
Basic formulation is on or about into 71, and there was a lot of things to be, but the actual agreement, I believe, was, was brought into effect late 73, three. And I could be correct, wrong. So, thank you. So, do you have a motion for that?
Okay, so, could I have a motion then?
You want?
Is there any discussion before we, before we move on, any discussion? Can I have a motion then?
Do you want one motion, or are you sure?
No, let's do them one at a time.
One at a time.
Let's do A first.
Then, I will move staff recommendation, number one, authorize Director of Airports or his designee to.
Yeah, I'm sorry, all three of those can.
Want me to just include all three? Okay, then I will, I will make a motion to accept staff's recommendation items, both one, two, and three, as put forth in the, the agenda.
And I'll second it.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it is carried. Now we can go to B.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the B is also in relation to the same project. This is for approving the plans and specifications for the Camarillo Airport Taxway Hotel Pavement Rehabilitation. Waive any minor irregularities in the bid, award a contract to Maxwell Asphalt Incorporated, which is the language I referenced in the previous five A that I said needed to be updated there. We've now updated it and incorporated that revised language here, because we have opened those bids. So, Maxwell Asphalt was the low bidder on the basis of lowest responsive bid, conditioned upon a receipt of, again, the Federal Aviation Administration grant. So, this is only conditioned upon that grant to fund the project and authorize Director of Airports his designee to execute the subject contract if awarded. And then if you flip over, the costs are all reillustrated again there, and the discussion once again goes into the same discussion. I'm happy to do it, read it again, or talk about it again, but it's literally the same discussion that we just talked about. Other than on page five B three, you'll see where the bids for the project were opened on June 25, 2019. A copy of the bid abstract for the two bids received is enclosed in attachment four. The bid has been reviewed for form. Maxwell Asphalt Incorporated of Salt Lake City, Utah submitted the lowest responsive bid in the amount of $213,351. The, the great part about this is it came in 22% under our engineer's estimate, so we're actually coming in under on this project from what we anticipated, and we believe the bid reflects the value of the work to be done. And the dates are also shown here. The grant award date is August the 6, based upon, of course, approval by the, with the expectations that we have now, the contract award to be August 15, and then notice to proceed September 25 with construction completion of November 6, or the anticipated schedule there. And did I answer all of your questions?
You did, yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'm happy to field more.
So, the, just the taxiway should not close down the runway, there should be workarounds then for being able to still continue operations?
Airport will remain fully open, and actually, on the taxiway project, we're doing phases on the taxiway project, so we're going to have accessibility through that, through that phasing at all times. So, yes, we'll be able to continue operations.
I had actually meant to ask you before, and I apologize, this is not trying to sneak a gotcha on, but have these guys ever worked with Camarillo before? Is this their first contract?
No, I think this is their first contract with us.
Okay. The, the reason that I ask that is because of the slurry seal, it's the, the guys who did on the fuel island and the taxiway accesses between EAA and Air Seven were probably the worst that I've ever seen, and I was just hoping they weren't the same guys.
Who did. I guess.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, being this company is. Coming from Salt Lake City, are there any requirements that it be local labor, a certain percentage of local labor used in this project?
The FAA is pretty stringent with us as well in that regard, as far as doing things, not so much local, but DBE and so forth, and I'm not sure, how much local labor, and I'm not, Aaron's not here, Aaron Powers is our projects administrator, and I'm not sure, I'd have to ask her, how much of it they're doing with local labor. I would envision on this project, because it's a very minor project really, they're probably a team that comes in and does their part and leaves, is, is what I would envision, because this is not a large project, or at least in the eyes of projects that we deal with them time to time.
Normally, traditionally, we do like to use local labor, you know, and, and that's extremely important to, I'm sure to all the members here.
Absolutely, and to us as well, yeah. And I'm just not sure on this, because it's, it's a specialty that you have to recruit and bring in, and I'm not sure how much of it is, is small and it's a quick project overall, relatively speaking, so.
These would be prevailing wage jobs?
The FAA requires all of that, so, yeah, absolutely.
And the only reason to request the local labor is exactly as Supervisor said, it'd be nice to keep the money circulating in the area. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your.
I don't believe we had a local bidder on this project. I think all of our bidders, I think we had two bids, and both were from other states. Arizona was the other one, thank you.
Can I, can I, why is that? Is this because this kind of asphalt laying is required, it's a special kind of company? It's not, it's not the same companies who're just laying asphalt out here for our roads?
You know, sometimes in different communities, that can be the case. It is a different mix of asphalt than what you would see out on the road, and it also is a, a different expertise, if you will, that has to accommodate the, the operations of an airport. So, their personnel are usually personnel that have operated on airports in that environment. They, they, you know, they, they're accustomed to coming in and doing those type of jobs. The asphalt mix is a different mix, so that is some of it as well, and it's just sort of what their niche is a lot of times and what they do.
There's not very many of these guys.
Right. And then the striping companies are, excuse me, the striping companies are the same way.
Okay.
They're more airport-centric.
Probably some liability issues would be present as well, people unwilling to go into an airport and do work just for the liability reasons.
Possibly, yes. Definitely a different niche of expertise.
Sure.
I have a question, and I appreciate you asking the question about the asphalt. I'd like to share this with you, so maybe we can check. Does somebody verify the quality of asphalt that we're asking? The reason that I'm asking.
Oh, absolutely.
There was a job in Oxnard at the corner of Channel Islands and Harbor. It's supposed to have a certain percent of crushed rubber, which is tires. It didn't. They made them come back and make it right, either pay for removing it and replacing it, or discounting the price that they charged us. And it turned out that only happened because somebody took the time to verify what was coming from the batch plant. It wasn't the, it wasn't the pavement person, the batch panel, pulled a fast one.
Yeah, so let, let me, let me be a little more clear, and maybe I wasn't a moment ago. When we do asphalt work, it is a different asphalt mix. I've actually got ahead of myself a little bit. This is not an asphalt, we're not getting new asphalt. This is a slurry seal.
Okay.
So, it's a, it's, it's a, it's a crack fill component and a, and a, it's a seal treatment that covers asphalt. But when we do asphalt, yes, we, we have the asphalt tested, and it has to meet a certain criteria before it's accepted. When we, like when we do the runway project next year at Oxnard, there, there'll be lots of testing that goes on with that mix, or those mixes of asphalt as they go down, or when they go down.
Thank you.
And, and that'll probably be most likely a, a company that specializes in that type of asphalt. Not, sometimes local companies do that, and we'll know more like on that next year when we do that. This is more of a seal and a restripe, so this is more of a preventative maintenance type issue. So, we're not really putting down new asphalt, more of a seal coat.
Thank you for clearing.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Could I have Ms. Byrd then, from the Airport Advisory Commission?
Right, thank you. Really, we didn't have a lot of discussion, no dissension on this particular issue at all, and it's just nice to see that there has been an award and significantly below the estimate, which is very positive, I think. So, it all sounds very good to us, and I don't think that we had any real problems with significantly looking at it as, as presented. So, thank you, good job.
Thank you. Twenty-four percent is very significant.
It is. Anytime you come in under, it's high.
Absolutely, especially 22.
All right, could I have a motion then for item five C, five B?
Chair, I will move the staff recommendation of items one through four under Agenda Item five B.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
Carries unanimously.
Okay, unfinished business, item number six. This has to do, and, and I don't know that I need to have the staff make any comment on this. It applies to bylaws both for Oxnard and for Camarillo, and Supervisor Long could not be here tonight, and she asked me if it was possible to defer the bylaw vote till next session, which is earlier than, in the August session. Is there a problem with, with the Oxnard part of that? Because you really do have the authority to go forward if you want to.
So, I just would ask Ms., to the Chair, when is the scheduled meeting in August? And I've known, this, we have, we're dark in August.
We are too, you know, in, in the board, but it's early August, isn't it?
It's, it's the second Thursday, so it would be, is that the first, eighth? Eighth. I'm being told, I haven't pulled the calendar up.
Yeah, it's, it's the, right at your adjournment page, it's eight August.
I won't be here for that.
Okay. And just for clarity, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure why, but in the email that I received from Supervisor Long, it was actually requesting for the September meeting.
Oh, May, okay, September then.
September.
So, then, let me query, my, we might want to go ahead and approve our portion, and then Camarillo can continue, continue that. What's, what's the pleasure of it?
Move the recommendation for this evening to, to pass the by, approve the new bylaws.
Could we have first?
But.
Second?
Mr. Chairman, if I may incorporate one comment just for consideration, or, the word expressly was, I think, being examined by both authorities. Just for clarification, that word is being, we suggest that that word remains in the document, and there was a request for that word to come out. I can't remember if it was from.
Actually, we had two people express that.
And exactly where was that, Kim?
In the third pair, article, let's see, let me find it.
Third article, second paragraph.
Yeah, sounds right. Third article, second paragraph.
And what, first line? What article was that? Let me.
Article three, under duties and responsibilities.
So, is it under both Camarillo and Oxnard?
It was, and I didn't know if Oxnard was trying to have the word removed as well.
Six A 10.
Six A 10. Any, any concerns from Oxnard? I don't have any concerns personally.
No.
No.
No, no concerns?
With leaving it in. And then the other item was, there was a couple of comments from last month's meeting as well to incorporate the, a reference, if you will, as to how the bylaws, one or both, would recognize, I guess officially, some type of a monthly statement from the commission and have that, even though it already is doing that, I think the intent was to have that incorporated into the bylaws. That language is, there's been some language proposed that covers that, and then there's been some discussion on that language that may or may not have that as final language.
And. A monthly statement, can you share some more information in that?
I'd have to.
Well, it, it comes down to this, we were trying to, Supervisor Long suggested that we have some mention about the relationship between the Airport Advisory Commission and the Airport Authority. The reality is there is no connection between the two organizations. Both of the organizations serve the Board of Supervisors, so we're sort of spinning our wheels individually, trying to set up an artificial relationship, I think. What, what we, what we were trying to do, what I tried to do in, in the wording, was to establish that was a, a, they would, they would brief us as a courtesy, and we would receive it as a courtesy, and, but I think that the advisory, the Airport Advisory Commission, which, who is in the process of revising their bylaws, asked us not to do anything in writing about that relationship until they had a chance to work on their bylaws.
Well, that's, that's been that for years, you know, and, and, and of course, and our responsibility is to recommend to the Board of Supervisors.
That's right.
So, I, I'm.
Just, just a question. Isn't the County Council supposed to weigh in on this, that particular item?
So, the council does not advise the authority. It only advises staff on those regards, on, on any kind of regards, as far as that goes. The language that we received is in a committee-type working group that Chairman Thomas had put together. I guess it's a committee, I'm not sure if it's a committee, or just additional resources or whatever, however you want to look at that.
It was me.
Okay, and then, my understanding is there's some confusion on that language by another gentleman that you asked from the Advisory Commission as well to look at it, so I just.
Well, he, and, he's a member of the Airport Advisory Commission who was leading the effort to revise their bylaws.
Right.
And, so, that, that, because there is enough uncertainty, now, the, again, the only concern I have of deferring the vote on the bylaws is that we did change the board membership and the requirements and, and all that, and I don't know whether that part of it is still.
Can I, can I share? We, we in the board have MACs, municipal advisory consults, that, for example, the fifth district has one, the third, and so forth, and they recommend to me, as the supervisor of the district, and then I either take it over to the Board of Supervisors or don't, but to have him sit in, in the same position as us, this, this doesn't work. And I'm sure if that's what the Advisory Board wants to do, is come in and share with us. I appreciate, you know, their, their advisory to us, but then we then recommend to the Board of Supervisors, so it seems to me like we're double work in this process. I'm, you know, I'm just my, my, you know, and I've been in this authority for many, many years, and I just worked, you know. So, anyway, that's my position. I'm not sure what, if you guys want another layer of, you know. Well, I can, I can throw in real quickly, I couldn't agree more. It's, it's, unfortunately, it's accomplishing nothing but taking up people's time, and I hate to see that on both sides of the coin, but I think we almost got redundant entities here ruling on the same things, kind of, one's advising, one's not, one's wants to do this, one's not. So, I think that we need to clean this up tonight and go ride the pony on down the trail. So, do we need that?
So, no, you, you're not required. Matter of fact, just for additional clarity, or maybe I confused it, the proposed language right now is only been added as a draft proposed language for the Camarillo Airport Authority. I think our team had taken some earlier meeting direction from the authorities to try to help find continuity between the two bylaws, so we were thinking, because of those maybe prior directions, that you may also want to consider whatever that language is. But as of right now, Supervisor Zaragosa, if you wanted to move forward, that language is not in your, in the Oxnard anyway, so you could move forward without it. If, if you wanted to add it, staff would recommend that you wait until it's clarified.
But we, we don't want to add it, then. Okay, we, you know.
Now it's clear as mud, right?
Right, thank you. So, we have, we have one speaker here on this item, and it's Mark Sullivan. Mark Sullivan? We want to, you can share information before we vote.
Apologize for being so casual, I just got back to the airport out flying.
That's okay.
In any event, Mr. Turner brings up the word expressly, like it's just one word. I was one of the two people that raised it. That word is extremely important in this document, because if you read it literally, it literally, if you, if you restrict your jurisdiction to, to matters that are expressly stated in the Joint Powers Agreement, you're very narrowly, narrowly circumscribing your jurisdiction. Conversely, you are greatly expanding the authority, the unchecked authority of the Department of Airports. They would report only to the Board of Supervisors, not to the authority, unless it's a matter expressly stated in the Joint Powers Agreement. There's very few things expressly stated. I mean, the few things that are stated, like size of aircraft and noise allowance, but they're very general terms, so it was not a minor thing, and I think that's why Supervisor Long hit on it. I can't remember who the other person was. I know I was one of the people that said the expressly was very important, because it, that word, it's not just make weight, it really circumscribes your jurisdiction. And as of all the citizens said, we really think that we need, you know, a, some authority between the Department of Airports and the Board of Supervisors, because the Board of Supervisors doesn't want to be receiving micro items directly, they don't have time for it.
That's right.
And citizens want to have an input to elected representatives and the like, and, and if it's expressly, Department of Airports goes directly to the Board of Supervisors, and we think that's a problem.
Mr. Sullivan, thank you so much, and I appreciate the advisory, you know, giving us advice, you know, to, that we can decipher here, because as you said, you know, in the Board of Supervisors, or even in the city consults, you know, we don't have time to look at all the details and so forth, so the recommendation from the advisory is important to us, and then our Advisory Board can then recommend and hash it out here, and then recommend to, to the Board of Supervisors.
I foolishly left my reading glasses in the airplane, so I can't.
[laughing]
But the, I noted that that expressly, as I recollect, limited the jurisdiction also of the Airport Authority, so that to me was a major problem. I think, I think you want to have general jurisdiction over matters, you know, there's a general policy statement in the Joint Powers Agreement, and anything that's jointly as a matter of policy within that ambit, I think you want to have jurisdiction over it, and expressly takes it away.
Yeah, thank you so much. And again, you know, the Airport Authority, actually, they report to the Board of Supervisors, but we have the benefit of having this board recommend to our board, you know, by hearing the matters and understanding, for example, the pavement type and the aft drop type, and things that we don't have time to think about.
Exactly. You, you basically cull the weak from the chaff, so they only get the hard nugget of the issue, which is, I'm sure.
But I appreciate your comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. So, what's the pleasure of Oxnard?
I'll move the recommended action.
Second? First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
So, we approve it and our second.
Thank you, sir.
I won't make a motion, I will make a recommendation that we defer this item until, if, I had, I was not cued in on Supervisor Long's request, but if, if what she's to, requested was September. then I'm comfortable with that. I don't think it necessarily impacts this board's makeup or operation in that time.
Do we need, do we need a motion?
Yeah, I will, I will, I will make a motion to.
Motion to defer?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to defer to our, what, September, September meeting.
Second?
Second. Any discussion? I think we've probably nailed it down. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it has passed. Camarillo's is deferred till September.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, number seven is director's report.
Thank you, Chairman. Let's see, start out with a few events that we've got on the horizon. The AOPA Rusty, there's an AOPA Rusty Pilot Seminar scheduled at Oxnard for August the 10th, Saturday, August the 10th. I encourage anybody that's rusty to try to come to that. It's an Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association Rusty Pilot Seminar. I had actually asked for this, so it was, these are nice events to bring pilots that might be a little rusty out, or to get some freshened-up training, and I'm actually one of those, so I'm hoping to be able to attend myself. There, the Oxnard Director's Office is now open. I think we announced last month that we were opening one. The team has done a great job of getting us some fresh paint and some carpet, and, and getting it where I can start spending some time in there, and I'm starting to do that now. I was in there for a few hours this week.
It's at the tower ring?
It is, it's in the base of the tower, where the Ops Office is as well. We're also going to be installing a VoIP, which I'm not sure of what that exactly stands for, but it's a voice-over IP system in the Oxnard Airport, which will tie into the Camarillo Airport Voice-Over IP System. Am I saying all that right? And that will make the continuity of business a lot smoother between the two airports when staff is operating between the two airports, and really, I think is going to be a nice complement to that airport system for administration and operations, and all of our business, actually, maintenance as well. Don't want to steal thunder from, I know the Chairman's going to talk about this, but the airshow's scheduled for August 17th and 18th. Yearly, yeah, so it's coming up for us. In response of that, this year, we created a new emergency response plan for Camarillo Airport to provide better guidance on emergencies for events like that, in any event, quite frankly. So it was something we needed to do anyway, and I'm pleased to say that we've got a really good plan. John was the guy that headed that up, and he's done a really good job, and he's coordinating with all the agencies now. He's put a lot of work into that, so thank you, John. The website is now ready and includes the project updates and videos of the authority meetings, as we had told you that would be coming. It's got links for the agenda packets, the minutes, and the videos for the meetings of the authorities that we've been asked to put on there as well. The staff has done an outstanding job on that. Anna's sort of headed that up, and Lori and several others have worked on that with them, and I want to thank them for that, because it's been a lot of work to get that done. But now, we're about as transparent as you can be. You can go to our website, you can pull up our project material, you can pull up our videos of our meetings, you can pull up whatever we're doing, basically, we're, we're going to keep incorporating that and putting that on, populating that on the website, so that you can have that. So that is now up and going. I encourage you to go take a look, and we'll always take constructive feedback, so please do that. Exploring the pursuit of a, and I sort of casually mentioned this, I think, last month, but we're actively now exploring the pursuit of a system master plan for both of the Ventura airports. Both master plans are outdated, and the master plan is the main document that guides us down the road for the future, and just my short time being here, I can tell you that I definitely see the need of us doing a new master plan update on both airports, so I'm looking at a system plan that would look at both airports maybe together, and I've already reached out to the FAA to see if they'll partner with us financially on that, and that was received with receptive ears. So as we go into our annual Airport Capital Improvement Program, meeting that we go into in the early fall, or this year it's going to be early fall, to talk about funding and so forth, that will be an item that we're including to work into the five-year plan. Hopefully, is getting it kicked off as early as first part of next year, I think it's, I think we're due for it. And I'll talk more on that as we get into that, and if we start exploring that a little deeper. I wanted to announce and let you know that in case you might have known him, Tom Rooney, our engineering technician, retired this past week after seventeen years with the county, and most of that with the airport. Tom was definitely a blessing and asset to the airport. In the short time I got to know him, he was, he was some, someone that we're going to miss having in the office, so. I don't know how many of you might have known Tom, but some of you I know have been involved with the airport for a number of years.
I know Tom for many, many years, yeah, yeah.
Very, very fine gentleman.
Lives in Oxnard.
Must be a good guy.
Another staff announcement, we've also recently hired an assistant, office assistant named Lance LaFoon. He started on July the first, so if you see Lance, welcome him. And as far as other vacancies, we have three regular vacancies in maintenance and one temporary vacancy that we're working now aggressively to try and fill. Some of those vacancies are because of promotions either into the operations area or just life-taking them elsewhere. The hangar lease update, did we do that slide, or I'm not sure? Actually, the hangar lease update is a different item. We've got, we were requested two different things, that's the hangar waiting list, the hangar lease update with the Hangar Owners Association, we have a meeting scheduled with them on August the 14th. We were requested to pick that ball back up and start moving it forward again, so we've been working aggressively coordinating schedules. There's several people involved in that upcoming meeting, so it had to coordinate a lot of calendars, but we do have that set for August the 14th. Last month, we had from both public comment and then follow-up from Mr. Calhoun and some others, the suggestion that we research ordinance 3480, as requested actually by Supervisor Zerigoza and Authority Commissioner Member Walter Calhoun. So we did do that. We've got to thank John again, John's the one that did most of the heavy lifting on this, and what we discovered, at least for us to be able to report back on at this point in time, is the ordinance 3480 that we researched and found was dated, oh gosh, hang on just a second, adopted February 26, 1980, and that ordinance was repealing Article 10 of Chapter Five of Division Six of the Ventura County Ordinance Code, and when you go to chapter, Article 10, Chapter Five of Division Six of the Ventura County Article, Ordinance Code, that is an Article 10 for enforcement. For the limited purpose of enforcement of the terms and provisions of this ordinance and all rules and regulations, the Airport Director of the County of Ventura, California is hereby designated as given the powers of and determined to be a peace officer. And then it goes on talking about that a little bit, so basically, that ordinance is, in our research, all that's doing is removing my ability to be a peace officer. So we had been asked to research that, that is our research to date. We're open to more suggestions for deeper research. If there's other items of that we're not, we've not yet found, we're happy to continue that search, but that's what we've discovered in our efforts thus far. And I'll maybe pause there in case you have a question on that, anyone?
No.
Okay. And then finally, the CMA hangar waitlist that we, in my April meeting when I got here, which was my first week here, I had a meeting with everyone, and, and I was, I was asked about the true, what, is our waitlist really a valid waitlist? So we've challenged staff over the last couple of months to really vet our hangar waiting list, and we've, they have done a, a series of efforts of work to do that. Just to recap a little bit about the work that's went into that, and again, John's getting a lot of praise here tonight, I hope his head can, can handle it all, but he and his team have done a lot of this work as well. There was a letter sent out, actually, in an effort to vet this list even before I got here, that dated February the 14th, 2019, went out to everyone on the Camarillo hangar waitlist, and then after the April meeting, we really ramped up that vetting process to try to make sure we had a real list that we can really be, you know, hang our hat on, because of comments that were made and, and suggestions that were made in the April meeting. As a result of that, additional multiple calls have been placed to everyone that had not responded to the February letter, and then finally, just to make sure that we had dotted all the i's and crossed the t's on this matter, we sent certified letters to all of the respondents that we did not have feedback from, and obviously, that was a cost to the airport, both staff and cost for certified letters, but those went out on June 28th to everyone that did not respond to any of the efforts made prior to that date. As a result, we now feel that we have a vetted list that we are very confident in. These people have, John, correct me if I'm wrong, but the people that are still on this list have paid money to be on the list, to have a deposit, and they've, they've asked to still stay on this list, so we feel very strong that this is a qualified list. So you'll see here out of the original 140, that we still have 93 out of that, that is, that, that is vetted to stay on the list, that is very, very much, very much interested in our hangar associate, in our hangar availability at Camarillo. Out of that, 11 changed their mind, said no, and then we still had 36, 26% roughly, that we have not been able to reach even through certified mail, so I've instructed staff to refund their money and remove them from the list so that we truly have what's left to be a vetted list. Now, all that means is if they start showing up out of the woodwork, all they do is give us another check and they go back on the list, but right now, we've made an exhaustive several-month effort to vet this list, and I think that if they haven't responded at this point in time, it's safe to say we should probably send their money back and assume they don't have interest. But I'm very excited to see the number that we do still have interested at 93 out of 140, which is 66%, and we, we constantly get calls on a routine basis, wanting, wanting more names added to that, so I envision that list to grow before we even get the hangars built, and, and it's just, and the first, the first build out of hangars that we're building is like, I think, 41, so we're still, we're still only going to have about half of what we need when we get through with this first phase. Is there any questions on anything on the director's report?
Yes, I have, on this list, is there any stratification of where these people stand on the list, I'm a number 10, I'm a number 20, anything like that?
Should be, I'm guessing, John.
Yeah, so what they.
Use your mic.
Yeah, so they are numbered one through 93, or one through 140, and they, it gets updated to the website, they can go to our office, it's posted at the office, and they can call us too. I've had several people walk in and ask, so they, they all know where they're at.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Along that line. I appreciate that you used the certified letters, that was smart. The second thing is, if the people now are sent checks and they don't cash the checks, how long are the checks good for? This third thing is, if they do come back and then they want to be reinstated, do they keep their original space, or do they go to the end of the line?
No, sir, the, the third question, they would go to the end of the line, because of the numerous attempts that they've failed to respond to. I'm not 100% legally sure what happens if the check comes back, I'm guessing it gets voided and we hold it into money in some trust account until they either show up for it or something. I'm guessing I would need to do a little homework on that one, but they'll always be able to come get their money if they are not there to accept the money, and maybe we know that now, I don't know. Actually, the man that knows is probably sitting right here, so, Jamal, if you would.
If the check stays outstanding for 90 days, the bank will cancel it.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. I forgot you were sitting over there. And I, was there another question that I missed?
That's good, that's good.
Okay. Got it.
Okay, thank you. You answered the, I had notes to ask you a couple of those things, and you answered them. So the, on, on 8A is the, is the current hangar list and operations and such, so the next one we'll have, that'll go from 140 down to 93, is that the, is, okay.
Very good, so. Could I ask one question? Sorry, are these all, is this the waiting lists for all the same kind of hangars, or very, these are all T-hangers, or?
So the way we do it is, you'll get offered the hangar that'll fit your aircraft, so if you have a bigger aircraft, you'll get offered the bigger hangar, smaller aircraft, smaller hangar, so.
Got it.
So the number actually doesn't necessarily go sequentially, because you, a box hangar, if somebody offered to me, I'd say, no, thank you, I can't afford this one, so, don't need it. Okay. Okay, so on reports, is there any, any particular report that the authority wants to address? Mr. Flynn?
I just have one question, it, it says in the report, the month, the date, just a quick question, you know, not lengthy, and it shows that the overall traffic at both airports is down, I think it's 5% in Camarillo 7 and Oxnard, what do we attribute that to, is that?
Yeah, I was, we were talking about it in that, in the office this afternoon, and I apologize, normally I try to do a little more in-depth homework on that, and I didn't even catch it till this afternoon. My guess is going to be, and I'm just, I'm, I'm straight up even when I fail to do something, so there you go, but my guess is going to be, a late afternoon guess here, this is obviously month ending May 31st, and Jorge reminded me that we had a lot of May gray in, in May this year, that maybe was a little more excessive than your previous Mays, I'm not sure, I wasn't here, but.
I, I will, I will personally attest that I've had more instrument approaches in, in May and June than I've had in years, so it is the weather.
So, that, that type of percentage equates well to that.
And, and if you remember, we actually had a significant rain event on Memorial Day weekend, because we watched the Indy, the Indy 500, because it was raining outside.
Really crazy.
So, just to reset. Okay, thanks. On the noise complaints, I, they're really pretty spectacular, but I, I would ask, is there something we can do to communicate with that one person that had three, three out of the four noise complaints, and they're scattered around the clock, so it's not like it's early morning or late in the evening? Is there anything we can do for something like that?
I, I believe we already communicate, but John, I'm going to ask you on a, on a, what are we doing already for that? I know we're making calls when we need to, or, or to follow up, but I'll let you pick it up.
So that one in particular person likes to call a lot. They, it doesn't matter what we do, it just seems that it's never enough, but what I can do is I can go out to where he's located and sit there and see if there's aircraft out there. Most of the time, we, what we do, we get the, the noise complaint, we call the tower, find out who it is, if we can, have them, bring them into wherever they need to be, ask them if they're in the right area, if they're in the right, the right altitude, turned at the right altitude, all that good stuff. So the next step would probably go out there and just sit out there and see if there's an actual, if it's actually happening, or if he's, because I know a lot of them go off of the Flight Radar 24 website, which not, can not necessarily be the most accurate, so that's probably the next step that we could take for, for that, for that certain individual.
So, I don't know, I was just concerned about, for the folks from Oxnard, is there?
Well, maybe that might be the opportunity to just go there and find out personally.
Well, I, I don't know if it's, I'm, I'm, Mr. Chair, I, I don't know if it's the same person that, no, it's not the same person? Oh, okay, because I was getting, I was getting 30 to 40 videos a day. Texted to me of every single aircraft that flew over this one individual's home, so I don't know what happened, but maybe I shouldn't be talking about it.
Well, just be happy.
We, we haven't received calls from him. I don't know what happened. In the irony of it, he's a sound engineer.
Okay.
I go, no, please.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't want to raise something that, anyway. If there are no other comments on any of the reports, do I have a motion to file? If there are no other comments on any of the reports, do I have a motion to file?
Receive and file. I can't do that, but somebody else can.
Thank you, we'll receive and file.
Receive and file.
On the correspondence, anything that the Director or the staff needs to discuss as far as the the correspondence, we were happy to see that that Rick has moved and seems to be settling into his into his new digs.
Yeah, stopped and saw him again this week, and he seems very content where he is, and I think adjusting well.
Okay, on item 10 miscellaneous, we have none, authority comments, 11.
Yeah, Chair, I kept, you know, and snap, you know, I was just talking to the Chair here too, that since Tom Rooney worked for us for, what, 17 years?
Yes, sir.
I wouldn't mind, you know, if the Chair of Camarillo and myself can put a little commendation for him, and maybe if he wants to come in in our next meeting, we'd be happy to present it to him.
I think that's a wonderful gesture, I will say, he is, he has moved to Prescott.
Well, we can always mail it to him.
But I think the gesture is a wonderful gesture, and I think he'd appreciate that.
Yeah, because I think it's important, especially after 17 years, and I've known Tom, and I'm sure Walt and and Doctor and the mayor and have known Tom for a long, long time, and also over here on the side. You want to share something?
I just want to toss something in, please don't leave Oxnard out. On many occasion, he went down to Oxnard to visit a particular problem that only he had, you need knowledge of, so please include this, whatever you do.
Yeah, and if you like, if you give us some bullet points, you know, I'd be, I'd be happy to have my staff in my office, food a commendation.
Absolutely.
Together with with our signatures, you know.
Absolutely. These guys knew him way better than I did, I've only been here three months, but I can tell you, it quickly grew on me as a, as someone we're going to miss having in the office, I can tell you.
Well, it's important when somebody works that many, many years, you know, and puts his life into it, and and it's important for for us to recognize individuals like that.
Yes, it is, thank you. We'll make sure to follow up with you, Supervisor.
Thank you. Walt?
Sir.
You want to share something?
I just want to share, he was, he was a Public Works employee, everybody knows that ain't no easy road, though, at least that's what they tell me, that's what they tell me, but he was the sweetest darn guy I have ever met, and it didn't matter what the task was, how late at night you wanted him to come out there, or what was involved, he was always, hi, Wally, how's it going, what can we do for you, if you ever need me, give me a call, and I tried to reciprocate, you know, and think I did, but he was just, just remarkable, is all I can say, so he deserves every bit of tribute we can possibly give him.
I agree, thank you.
Thank you, that's a good idea. Any other authority comments? Well, hearing none. Early adjournment tonight.